Good evening. And welcome, and thank you for taking the time to tune into our Select Board meeting of November 20, 2023. I'd like to begin this meeting by first approving the signing of the warrant, motion to approve signing of the warrant.
Chairman, I make a motion we sign the warrant for November 6, 2023.
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
And I make that unanimous. Thank you. I'd also like to review and approve the minutes of our regular scheduled meeting of November 6, 2023.
Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the regular minutes of our meeting of November 6, 2023.
Thank you for that. Michael?
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
And I make that unanimous as well. Also approval of our executive session minutes of November 6, 2023 as well.
Chairman, I make a motion we approve the executive session minutes of November 6, 2023.
I would second that as well, Mr. Chairman.
You make that unanimous as well. Thank you so much for that. We have a public, three public hearings this evening, and our first being the tax classification hearing. This is an annual public hearing held to consider the issue of allocating the percentage of the tax levy to be borne by each class of property for fiscal year '24. A legal notice was published on October 31, 2023 in the Milford Daily News. We have Jennifer Sklar, our assessor and administrator, and we also have our Board of Assessors Chairman Josh Leoch, Paul Simms, and Stephen Borges. Thank you and welcome, and let us know what's going on there with our taxes.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. We'll let Jennifer take it away as she always does to start the presentation.
Sure. Thanks, Jen.
Thank you. You guys all were given a copy of the packet of the presentation ahead of time. Hopefully you can follow along.
Thank you for that.
So discussion, these are the items that we're going to be just overviewed tonight. We're going to talk about the new growth in the community, give you a flavor for the value changes between '23, last year, and this year, '24, tell you what a single tax rate calculation would be. We've included a slide for the historical shifts on the commercial, industrial, and personal property. For your reference, that was something that came up last year, was to kind of look at what we had historically done for a rate shift, so we've included that for your review. And then we're going to talk about the split tax rate options, different options that you can consider and what those impacts would be, along with what that resulting valuation by class and share of levy would be. And then, more importantly, for our average tax, our taxpayers, is what the average tax bill will be in comparison to last year. And then we'll ask you to consider the three local options, which are your residential exemption, your small commercial exemption, the open space discount, and then depending on the choices of the rate shift, we'll do the motions. That's okay?
Beautiful. Thank you.
So new growth, property taxable for the first time, exempt property going into the taxable class, new construction, lot splits, additions, new personal property accounts, businesses that come and go, subdivided land and condo conversions. So noteworthy growth this year, only five new single-family homes, 30 new condos, landmark place was completed, Walter Circle subdivision, 27 new personal property accounts, 9.7 million in utility growth, and Sierra Naturals personal property along with 7.5 million. The residential growth for this year in value was 29,608,730 in tax. That translates to 427,846. That's down significantly from last year because last year was an outstanding year. So when you see that down by this percentage, it is in keeping with what our typical average year of growth is. Just compared to last year, it looks exceptional. Commercial, industrial, and personal property, down slightly, 30,37,322 in value, tax translated to 794,488. And you can see the total growth for the years in comparison, 1.9 to 1.2 this year, which is 36 down.
Okay.
But still keeping with most of the years in the past.
Sure. Again, last year was an exceptionally used year.
Yep, it was. It was. So the next slide here is evaluation changes. This is comparing last year's average to this year's average, single family, going up 14.93% to 484,300. Condos up 15.91%, and we're going to go down the line. Two families, 17.99%, three families, 14.24%. Apartments, 11.14%. Vacant land, this is the first time we're seeing land increase in value in the last few years. We haven't had a valuation change on the land, so that's different for us this year. Commercial up 6.6% and industrial 9.09%. Please feel free to stop me if you have questions as I go. Taxable value, so we have a 13.75% increase in the taxable value of the town. This is the total value of the town over last year. Our levy is 86,528,46. That's the levy limit, excuse me. The actual levy is the 80,734,044.
Okay.
Last year's levy was the 77,910,190. So that represents a 3.62% increase in the levy this year over last, which is less than the increase in the levy was last year.
Last year, yeah.
Excess levy capacity, now this number that's here, this 5.788 million, that will depend on the rate shift that you choose tonight. So once we have a rate, we'll give you an exact figure on the excess levy capacity. But it's obviously, this is to show you that it's in line with what we had for excess last year. Okay? Single tax, the amount that we're raising is a fixed number, that doesn't change. If we take that amount less other anticipated revenues that we'll receive through estimated receipts, that equals what that tax levy is. This is what we're raising through taxation this year. We divide that by the taxable value, which has also been fixed, and we come up with what a single tax rate would be, and that would be 15.25 if we didn't shift the rate. All taxpayers would pay on that 15.25. And with that tax rate, the average single-family home this year's value would be 7,386, and the average commercial would be 16,379. This is, it's a lot of, it's a lot of numbers there, so I apologize for that, but I wanted to give you a nice, long history. This is just to show you historically, if you look in the far right column, that is the shift that we've had historically going all the way back to 2003. Okay? And you can see that we've got 1.58, 1.6, 1.5, 1.48, and then we climbed back up, 1.53, 1.58, 1.57, 888. Just to give you an idea of where we are. Okay? This next page is going to be kind of the meat of, for your consideration tonight. These are your rate shift options and the impacts on the average assessed value. Each row of this spreadsheet is giving you a different shift and what the different impacts would be. I've circled a couple of them, and I've circled them just to kind of point out things that the board has, your board has done in prior years, was to look at trying to balance out the tax dollar impact between the classes of property, which is that line down below, 239 and 213 that are circled. So that's what you would need to shift to, to get those numbers equal. You...
Excuse me, Jennifer?
Yep.
Just to start.
1.58.
1.58 is where we're currently at, where most of the data on this presentation has been based on.
All right, the 1.58.
Thank you.
Right.
Yep.
Excuse me.
Thank you. So 1.64 would give you an even tax, tax dollar increase impact in the classes, and the 1.66 is there to just show you that the residential percent of levy and the commercial percent of levy are the closest to what a 1.58 last year did, meaning that the residential share of the levy last year was closest to the 69%. And you'd have to shift all the way there to get there. And that's just based on what the values did with the residential versus commercial this year. So not a recommendation in any way, but just to kind of show you the different target points or points of consideration that have been made by the board in the past.
So excuse me, Mr. Chairman. If I may.
Sure.
Just to make it a little bit layman's almost, the 1.58, if you look at that row, which is in pink on the board here, you're going to see that it will increase the single-family tax bill on average by $340-ish, where the commercial change would be a negative drop of 774 if you stayed at the current rate, which is obviously the decision you are here to make.
Mm-hmm.
If you're looking for a more balanced shift, again, not a recommendation, just an average, that 1.64 would bring it where the dollars in regards to money impacted would be almost equally shared in how much is decreased. But the 1.66 is the percentage, that 70/30 split that is typical to what we've done in the past.
Right.
So just trying to give as many, Jen does a great job. This is a lot of numbers, this is a lot of data, but just trying to give you a good idea.
Right. But you did mention too, that last year it was at, let me see, 1.66?
1.58. 1.58.
1.58. Oh, okay. I mean, that's this year.
That's what it's been historically.
Okay. All right.
Yeah.
And the 1.66 that you have here, and you have the 69.89 circled, what would that indicate?
That's more the percentage, which represents, as you, the numbers circled is the percentage of levy per the type of property.
Right.
So that's a 70/30-ish split from residential to commercial. The dollars being more equal is the 1.64 shift. You were trying to do an equal dollar amount. It's impacted on the residential versus commercial.
I see it, yeah.
And then the 1.58 is where we are at today, or the, you know, currently previous.
Okay.
And then obviously, a tremendous amount of other options in between.
I see that, yeah.
There's a lot of, obviously you can look at all the different numbers in regards to the percentage shift and the dollar amount as well. So a little bit to digest.
Mm-hmm.
And we can certainly kind of come back to that if you want to go to the next slide as well, Jen.
The rest of the scenarios that you see here are based on the assumption that we would stay with the 1.58 shift. That's what we've had for the last six years, so that's kind of how we worked it up. We can't run scenarios on every single option, so we give you the one and know that it will flex either way depending on if you adopted something different. This basically is telling you what the valuable value is for each of the classes of property, what the share of the levy would be without a shift, meaning if we had a single tax rate, the residential would absorb 81% of the tax levy. What we need to raise in taxation this year, 81% of that would come from that residential class. The remaining 20% would come from the commercial, industrial, and personal property. Whereas with the share of the levy that we have, the shift that we have with the 1.58, that 80 drops to 70. So the residential class is bearing a 70% responsibility for the levy, and 30 for the commercial, industrial, and personal property. So it's just a comparison for you to see that with the 1.58 shift, 10% of that levy is being shifted upon that other class, the other classes, commercial, industrial, and Next slide, average tax bills, 23 to 24. So we're getting from last year's averages, this year's averages. Single family, last year's average tax bill, 6,096. We have the new average value with what the rate would be tonight if we were to shift to a 1.58, which is 1329 on residential class, would give an average tax bill of 6,436, resulting in that tax increase for single families of $340 or a 5.58% increase in their tax bill. Going down the line, condominiums, tax increase would be $226 on the average. Two families would be 479 increase on the average. Three families, increase of 348. Apartments, 193 increase. Vacant land, 275 increase. Commercial, a decrease of 775.
Mm-hmm.
And industrial, a decrease of 254.
What was the difference last year, Jen, between single family and commercial?
What do you mean, the difference? The difference in...
Like a percentage change?
Probably dollar amount you're thinking about, right, Michael?
Dollar amount, yeah.
Right.
Good question.
I got it.
She got it.
Last year, a single-family tax bill with the shift that was adopted last year was $292.
What was the percentage?
5%.
5%.
Yeah. Yeah, so we're in the same...
Just to go, huh?
Yep.
And that, and that decrease of the 775 for the commercial and the 254 for the industrial was a result of what?
Well, the residential class saw a bigger increase in value this year.
Okay.
So based on the growth of the value of the...
Of the single family and two, residential?
Right.
Okay.
Commercial and industrial saw much less growth than the residential sector.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The next slide is the residential exemption, and this is something that we just give you to just see that there are 17 communities this year, this last year, that had adopted a residential exemption. Exemption, if adopted, would increase the residential tax rate because the residential share of the levy must still be met, so that gets shifted on to the rest of that same class. The exemption is primarily for Cape Towns, city areas, where there's a, you know, you're trying to give a benefit to your year-round residents.
Right.
So it's not really something that applies to our demographics.
I was going to say, years past, you...
Right. It's a, no, no. And again, that would remain the same. The small commercial exemption, again, it's another one that's this big, complicated mathematical equation, but the bottom line is, there's 14 towns that have adopted this. You can exempt up to 10% of the value of the Class III commercial properties, but that then gets made up by the rest of the commercial and industrial properties, not the personal property. That would be a third tax rate. So this would create three tax rates. And again, the average commercial property not receiving this exemption would have a tax increase of $128. An industrial would increase 194. There's about 85 properties that would likely qualify for this exemption, but the average valued eligible parcel would save almost $1,000 with this exemption.
Right. But that's also brought on to the other properties who won't qualify for that.
Exactly. Yep. Do you have something to say?
No.
Are you sure?
Sorry.
Are you talking to me? I'm sorry. It sounded terrible. The last is the open space discount, and that's not something that we have property classified as open space to apply the discount to. So again, it's not one that would really apply here for Milford.
Right. Exactly.
And then the motions. So I guess we just need to see if we've answered all of your questions regarding the shift.
Yep, I believe you did. Tom and Mike, any questions or concerns or you would like to add to this presentation?
I don't have any.
That was done very well and precise to...
I don't, it's always thorough.
Very, very thorough. Thank you for that, too.
Poor Josh and Jen, you just help in your office there.
Thank you, Jennifer. We have to thank her, she's amazing, and I always say we're very lucky to have her. Any questions in regards to any specific tax rate shifts that you're under review for this evening?
No, everything, like I said, was explained and done out very well and good to understand, especially someone like myself who's not used to these numbers all the time, too, you Anyway, I'm going to make a motion, entertain a motion for the town to adopt the residential factor of .8715.
The...
For the residential factor.
So the rate would be the 1.58.
The 1.58 shift.
That number, yes.
I believe we ought to stay with the same rate we had last year.
Right. Okay. Michael?
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
I make that unanimous. Thank you so much. Next motion, I move to make, entertain a motion for the town not to grant open space discount, as described by the assessors.
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
I make that unanimous as well. Thank you for that. Entertain a motion that the town adopt, not, not adopt a residential exemption as explained by the assessor.
So moved.
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
I make that unanimous. Also, entertain a motion that the town not adopt a small commercial exemption as explained by the assessor.
So moved.
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
I make that unanimous. And also, the board has been aware of excess levy capacity in the amount of 5,788,801.82. Need a motion on that, do you?
Not just your...
Right.
You made one.
Anyway, thank you.
Thank you so much.
No further questions. Thank you for that, and appreciate everything you do. Thanks.
Thank you very, very much.
To sign the second page of that, I think some minutes tomorrow.
Sure.
There's not lines. You just got to kind of make a spot.
Oh, just sign.
Yes, in the one year.
Okay.
I appreciate it.
Thanks, Beth. You as well. Take care.
Nice to see you again.
How are you?
He's growing the beard.
Take a wipe. Have a great night. Thank you for everything.
I have a real pen. Okay, I was going to ask if you need mine.
I use the rice bowl, ain't what a lot of things.
Thank you very much.
Ricky. Thanks.
See you now. Thank you. Oh, sure. Sure. Yeah, yeah. Okay. Sure. Okay. Yeah, Kristen's there, right? Thank you for that. Okay, we have two other public hearings scheduled. Right now, we're a little, something, you know, there's something came up where we're going to delay the second public hearing, and the third public hearing is supposed to start at 6:30, so we're going to wait for that, where it is a public hearing, we've got to go to precise time. But we will jump right into the Human Resource Director, Kristin Melpiniano, and she's going to be here for, there's B3, C3.
C2.
C2. Okay.
Retirement.
Right, for the Human Resources, Kristin Melpiniano, informing the board of the retiree contribution rates for 2024. And we have that in front of us right now. Okay, Kristin, we're all set. We have our...
Hi, everybody. How are you?
We had so many, we had so many this, this meeting, so I'm trying to like go through them all. But anyway, thank you, in your honor.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you for attending this.
Oh, great. Yeah, thanks for, thanks for entertaining this proposal by the Insurance Advisory Committee. I know Peter was intending on coming. I think he's going to be a little bit late for it, but that's okay. The long and the short of it is that the retiree contribution strategy has been looked at a little bit over the last couple of meetings. And on this last one, we were talking about evening it out because, as you can see on the memo, Medex was, is presented at 50/50. Our new plan, the Medicare Advantage, is presented at 50/50. And the top is at 70/30. Now, historically, that was because it was a much less expensive plan. I'm sure that the strategy at the time was to try to drive traffic to that because, you know, it was a much less expensive plan. But now it's out of whack because it's, now you're contributing 70% to a much more expensive plan. So they decided that to keep things simple and to balance it, rebalance it, to propose a 60/40 split. And so we ran the numbers on it. You can see them on your sheet in front of you. There's a cost to it. I brought it to the Finance Director, and he tells me that the cost is not prohibitive, that it is encompassed in the budget, it's included in the budget. Those numbers, we always prepare for, those types of things. And so he said he supported that, and I said, well, great, then let's, the IAC recommends to bring it before you folks.
Very good. And I like the way you compromised that for, for the Medex, because like I said, it was 50/50, and you decided through the board, which I thought was a very good compromise, to go 60/40 instead, which, which really helps out. Thank you.
Okay.
And let me see, we would need a vote on this. Any, any members have any questions or concerns or anything you'd like to say regarding these rates?
Just what are the advantages of the new program over the one that existed before, Kristin?
Are you talking about the Medicare Advantage Plan?
Yes.
Yeah. So the first plan, the Medex with the RX, is considered like a Medigap. It works with your current Part A and Part B. Medicare Advantage is an all-encompassing, it includes everything in it, so you don't have to haul these, have to have all these piecemeal pieces to it. It's, it also has all these extra parts to it. It has dental coverage, it has vision coverage, it has those types of little extras, fitness benefit and all that. It's more like your average HMO, except it also has the advantage of being a PPO, so it's, it's much broader. So it's, it's a really good plan, and it just acts a little bit differently than the Medex. We're thinking that a lot of folks that already have it, the demographic we're talking about doesn't like to change a lot, and so there may be people who keep, you know, their Medex and Medigap. I understand from talking to the benefits folks today, Kara and Laura, that they were, they had sent out the mailing and they got quite a few phone calls. There's a lot of people asking questions about, you know, what's the advantages and so forth. So I think we're going to have some, some migration over there, and I think that a lot of the folks that are transitioning into retirement coming up are going to take this plan because it's a very popular option just because of its simplicity and because of the extras. And it's nice that it's priced almost the same.
Very good, especially in today's day and age when insurances are going crazy, especially, you know, with your health insurance. We really appreciate that work that you did.
Oh.
Thanks. Michael, any questions or concerns?
I do not have any, just wanted to say thank you, Kristin.
Okay.
I think...
Appreciate it.
I think all the hard work, and I know there are people looking into this and trying to figure out how to best serve the retirees, being one of them. So this is my disclosure, but I think that you've done great work. I did receive the mailing, and I looked at it, and I didn't get online yet to see what the differences were, and you cleared it up for me. I appreciate it. But I did see a number of the rates that actually dropped as far as, you know, retirees themselves. So I commend you for that, and I would make a motion that we approve the recommendations of the retiree contribution, the board that looked at this, as well as, as Kristin has presented it.
Sure.
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
And I would make that unanimous. Thanks so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristin.
Excellent. Thank you.
Have a good night.
Good night, now.
Have a nice holiday.
Good night. You, too.
Okay. Here we go now. Okay, we're still, we can go with the public hearing at 6:30, Mr. Consigli?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The next agenda item is a public hearing that was scheduled for 6:30. The Select Board will hold this public hearing pursuant to general laws, Chapter 138, Section 64, and other applicable law to consider whether or not to modify, suspend, or revoke license issued for CT Bar, Inc., which is the Central Tavern. The reason for the hearing is due to a serious fight that occurred both inside and outside of Central Tavern on November 12th and 13th, 2013. We have our Police Chief Robert Tizino and other officers that will be present or at least give their opinion on what happened that night. And Town Council Brian Murray will here to conduct the hearing. Brian here?
Yeah.
Oh, Brian, how are you? You stuck right by me.
I didn't know that.
I am here, Mr. Chairman.
There you go, Brian. Thank you so much. The floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. And as you stated, the parties have been duly noticed about the incident or incidents
Thank you so much. Chair's, the applause yours.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and as you stated, the parties have been duly noticed about the incident or incidents giving rise to this hearing. At this point, we have Chief Tizino here, and I would ask the Board to allow him to present, uh, the evidence, uh, put forth by the Police Department through the reports of his office.
Sure. Chief?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nobody minds?
No, no.
Go ahead. Yeah, yes, no, no, we can fit.
Use them.
We can fit. So, um, again, we're talking about the, the Central Tavern, this is 31 Central Street in Milford, and if it pleases the Board, um, I'll just take you through the events, and this is actually a, I'm just gonna say, we're gonna say two things. We're gonna say November 12th, November 13th, because what happens is, is it kind of bleeds over into the next day with the hours. So there were actually initial two calls at this location, um, and kind of what transpired there. So initially, uh, on the 12th, November 12th, at, um, 2217 hours, which is 10:17 Eastern Standard Time in the PM, the Milford Police Department Patrol Division, uh, was called for a noise complaint at the establishment, 31 Central Street, Central Tavern, and, um, I did conduct my own investigation, speaking to my shift commanders and officers that were there. Um, a sergeant who was there, one of the sergeants, Sergeant Joe Francis Coni, who were very lucky, um, his investigation, because Joe Francis Coni is very fluent in Portuguese.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and so he was able to put together a report and, and his incident. Unfortunately, Sergeant Francis Coni had a family emergency, couldn't be here tonight.
Okay.
Um, but, but I digress. So, at that time, they, they showed up and they spoke to what I have here as, um, the owner. They spoke to the owner, and I guess there was a concession as far as to an agreement that it was too loud, and I have here in the initial contact report that, um, the owners were spoken to, spoken with, and they will be closing the windows and closing the venue soon. So that's where that left, and that was at, uh, 2217. And then now we've moved into Monday, which is after midnight, right? So it's 0049, which is basically 12:49.
Mm-hmm.
But now we're into Monday morning.
Yep.
And, um, Milford Comm Center receives a call for a fight. Fight in progress, um, officers arrive on scene, shift commanders arrive on scene, and, you know, these are all reports of record. There's nothing here that's not, uh, public record. So, uh, when they arrive on scene at the Central Tavern, um, what they witness is approximately 40 to 50 people inside and outside the bar, um, and I have one officer that states that 20, 30 people across Central Tavern, across Central Street, and over into the Jefferson Street Lot. People were rowdy, several different groups, people fighting, um, and Officer Branch, uh, on scene in his report, um, effecting an arrest for an individual, um, that was charged with disorderly conduct, disturbing the peace. The situation was so out of control that the sergeants deemed it necessary to call in mutual aid from other towns, um, and that went, went as high as it initially started with Upton, I mean, Hope Dale went to Upton, Holliston, and then the State Police. That's a pretty robust response. Um, and it says here that one of the complainants stated, um, that there were several punches thrown, um, and police will only have to identify the witnesses, who will provide, um, them with victim information, so there were people on scene that, that were helpful, um, that came forward. Um, the, I, I would like to mention that, um, the owners, um, and the gentleman here to my left, um, they were very helpful to the police in trying to quell, uh, this incident. Um, you know, that's always a big thing for us in policing, when we show up to something like this, the people that are responsible for the event, or house party, whatever it is, that they're amicable to the police showing up, and they're responsive to us and helpful to us, right?
But, but how did it get to that point?
Well, I understand, well, that's why we're here. But, but, but it's also important-
I'd be helpful to them.
Yeah. No, I understand, but, but it's not always that way, you know, Mr. Chairman.
I understand, right, right.
It's not always that way. I mean, sometimes that we show up at these things, and the owners or the, you know, um-
Or they, they just didn't come from, uh, ma- main street and come down and fight?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, so, but a lot of times, we do have that back and forth with owners and host of venues, that they're like, "Get out of here, there's nothing to see here, don't worry about it, we're taking care of it, I don't know who called the police, you know, it's not a big deal," and we didn't get that here.
Well, when you got, uh, numerous people fighting in the street, it is a big deal.
I, I understand, Mr. Chairman.
There is no defense.
I'm just, I'm just telling you, telling you my life-
All right.
And how it works for us, you know, I just wanna be very factual with this. So, um, you know, crowds were dispersed, but it, it took a lot to disperse them, and I believe there was, uh, plenty of video on social media about the fracas, if you will. The disconcerting part, uh, for us is, you know, I'll be honest with you, as, you know, as kind of an ebb and flow, you know, we showed up there at, um, 17 past 10, and that should have been the belt go off, and things should have been wrapped up, and they weren't. Um, I feel like, I don't know if they felt overwhelmed at the establishment, I know we'll hear from, from counsel and the gentleman exactly what transpired and, and their perception of it, um, but I think they just, everybody got overwhelmed very quickly, very quickly. Uh, one of our officers, Sergeant Francis Coni, actually injured his thumb, um, putting, taking somebody into custody, and this was somebody, and again, public record, um, for an arrest, and this was somebody who was told to leave and was just defiant with the police, like, "No, I'm not going anywhere." Um, and that turned into, "Well, yeah, you're going," and it turned into arrest, where, you know, Sergeant Francis Coni injured his thumb. Um, hasn't missed any work, and, you know, he appears to be doing a lot better with that, but, but that did in fact, you know, happen. Um, and then the following day, um, again, it's, it's not a domestic, so it's not protected class of, of a report, a female showed up at the Police Department to state that, you know, she was struck in the face by an employee, um, who punched her in the face to get her to leave.
Was that employee I, I, I identified, or is-
The employee has been identified, yes.
Okay.
Um, and, you know, she had obvious bruises to her face. Um, yeah, and so we're here today, and that's really, um, you know, the other thing to mention, it took 40 minutes for officers to gain control of this situation.
And that's all the officers that you called in?
Yeah, that's-
About the State Police?
Upton, Hopkinton, uh, State Police, and, um, the Hope Dale Police Department. It went from Central Street over into Jefferson Street Municipal Lot, and, you know, the officers and the shift commander, you know, deemed it was just too much for the resources on hand, and which, which that happens with different instances where we call for mutual aid. We go mutually to their towns, they come to our town, so that's really all I have, and is I'll answer questions if I need to.
And, Mr. Chairman, uh, the chief referenced some video, I think a lot of that was disseminated prior to. I'm not sure if we have the video here.
Yeah, the video is through Instagram, and I would have to log into Instagram, but I don't have a login for Instagram here, so I don't actually have the ability to show it from this room.
Okay. But, you know, I think we all viewed the video I did, and, uh, I think, you know, some of the images were, were disturbing. Um, and, and the other thing that I would, uh, bring to the Board's attention, uh, and I'm not sure if this is really within the chief's jurisdiction, but the, um, anonymous complaint that was received talked about customers being able to buy a whole bottle of liquor, like Johnny Walker Black, and then they just served it in beer buckets. Customers would just take it and serve themselves, uh, there were quite a few walking around drinking from the bottles straight, um, so the text of that email was provided to everyone as well.
It just appears that every, um, rule, regulation, or responsibility that is, that a license holder must uphold was violated practically.
It was significant, though.
How, how, how long has the place been open?
Yeah, that was the first date.
Was the first?
The second.
None knows what the second, third, and fourth, the fifth are gonna be like.
Yeah, we've been, we've been open since.
Thank God.
It was just that five events.
Like I said, has there been, has there been any training there, like that tips training, or something that you need?
All of the, all of the, uh, people that are serving are all licensed, I mean, like, you know, they've all had the training, uh, whether it be tips, or I think that there's another, uh, the serving alcohol course, um, they've all taken those courses, um, so they're abreast of the information, you know, how to identify someone who's been over served.
Prior to this event? I was gonna say, did they just take them now, or they had, they take them before this event?
No, they're, they're, I have certificates here for all the-
Great. That's, that's, that's great, Mr. Consigli, but, so what happened?
The happy hour statute, you can't serve a person more than two drinks, and you have to identify where the second drink is going.
At the time you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yes.
And we get people that are being served a full bottle of alcohol.
Well, I think my, I think we don't agree with tho- that set of facts that this anonymous person had, um, put in, that had submitted, uh, online.
Do you disagree with the fact that this woman went to the Police Department and said the, the employee assaulted her?
We, I mean-
Just asking.
No, I mean-
Asking a question?
He, he, my client, my client would say that his employee did not assault somebody.
Does he deny the fact that he wasn't, him or other managers or supervisors were not the people that called 911, as the regulations require?
One of the, who was it that called the 911?
Head security guard that we hired. He's the one that called first, police, police station.
So you had asked before what had happened?
No, I, I'm not done.
I'm sorry.
Hey, excuse me, I'm sorry, Counsel, I... If you could provide the chief with that person's name and phone number, because I wanna see where they called, what, and what part of the sequence.
We, um, guess he called-
Posing the question, so he can look at the records to see when that call came in.
Exactly.
Because that's gonna be critical for me.
Okay. But he called in when it got out of hand on the parking lot, but everything from my point of view, I was there, and-
That's the point, you just said it. He called when it got out of hand.
That's when we closed off the bar.
Right.
That happened across the street, but-
Right, because you, you moved, you're still responsible if it happened across the street, if they came from your establishment.
Unless I'm here, I'm not running from my-
We gave you the regulations.
And we followed it as much as we can inside, I can't have control.
As much as you can, you're expected to follow.
It got way out of hand, uh, like, before any intervention came, it had to be too late, because when you're talking dozens of people fighting from Central Street to Jefferson Street, um-
It was-
It's just incomprehensible for me to believe that that could actually happen without any intervention, you know, really. Uh, uh, Chief Tizino, uh, when, when you were there, did you see anybody drinking outside?
I, I, I didn't respond to this.
Okay.
Yeah, I didn't, so I didn't, I did my investigation-
Yeah.
After the fact.
Okay.
Um, yeah, I didn't, I didn't respond to this.
Very simple question, how do they get bottles of alcohol versus a glass of alcohol?
Were you, because we can serve the beer bottles, so-
You mean the Jack Daniels, you mean the-
Yeah, no, so this is basically what, what they had offered at this particular, at this event was, there were eight, um, there were eight tables, standing tables, where there were multiple people at the tables. There was four bartenders, um, for, for every, for each two tables. They brought, um, the alcoholic beverage that had the Red Bulls surrounding it in a bucket, and it was the person that was the bartender that was actually serving the people one at a time. The people weren't just drinking, like, just taking shots out of a, uh, Johnny, a Johnny Walker Black, um, bottle, as this person seems to claim. So it was supervised by a bartender at the, at, at these stations.
I'm just thinking too, uh, from what I understand, at, at the time too, there was, um, when, when our police first responded, they, we only had four on shift, chief?
So you had, um, five.
Five.
Four.
You had five, and from what I understand, according to some reports, there's something like maybe 30 to 35 people outside gathering, whether they were fighting or just watching, whatever, and, and you can see too, Mr. Consigli, that, that definitely puts our police officers' safety, uh, very much, uh, a, a safety problem for them, you know what I mean? Anything could have happened, where during the report too, they were even told that some people were being arrogant enough not even to listen to one of the police officers or, or, or more, you know? So like I said, that, that's a terrible, uh, situation for us, for our five police officers to be involved with in, in a case like that. Very dangerous, very dangerous. It's not only the matter of not following your tips education that, that you had, you know, what you should have, you should have done this, you shouldn't have done that, but again, you had some problems where we could have had some hurt officers, you know?
It was fortunate that it didn't get to that.
Very, very fortunate.
You did have a hurt officer.
Exactly, right.
I have a line of duty report that I have to sign off on.
Question, an important question is that if all the training was in fact done ahead of time, how did it escalate to this?
In terms of the serving, we believe that we served in a, a manner that was commensurate with the license. We didn't, we don't believe we violated the serving of the license.
How could you say that?
Well, the problem-
And escalated to where it did.
It, well, we had some unruly patrons, for sure, and-
They get unruly.
Apparently, it, if, in the police report, it, it remarks that, I guess, the first, the first gentleman that was arrested, I guess, was upset because someone had said to him that he was dancing with his girlfriend or something. Um, he was asked to leave, and actually, the officer that responded, um, I don't know if that was, I think that was Officer Branch's report, actually reported that they told him to leave, "Just go." And apparently he did, but the, what happened was he came back, so when they were talking with the owners and in the, in the bar, this guy appeared again, and, um, they arrested him on the spot. The other person apparently was a cowboy that it took multiple officers to restrain, I guess due to restraint or something, um, but, you know, last call was at 12:15, um, my clients cleared the bar, um, by 12:30. The problem is that no one left, and the other problem is that, that the security that they had hired, the two, the two, the one that was on one door, the other one at the other door, um, they tried their best efforts to try to dissuade, you know, to just go home, um, but it just kind of unraveled, and they weren't, they weren't able to disperse the crowd.
Why didn't they call the police then?
I think at that point, when they realized that they couldn't, that something had to be done-
We closed at 12:30, call, you don't wanna leave? There's people that get paid to come, that's their living, that's their occupation, their profession, to come and take care of those things, and it's right in the regulations. You know, I mean, I, I look at the printout from the Police Department-
We're outside, yeah.
Counselor, and, and one hour after the fight, one hour, so this person was arrested, goes to the police station, one hour later, he's outside the police station, it's in the log, and he's vomiting out on the, the lawn of the police station. You know, if that's not over serving, I don't know what over serving is. I, this is, you know, the first night, and, and am I right that there was a $50 cover charge?
We sold prior tickets for that live event only.
Was there a $50 cover charge?
Yes.
How much was a bottle?
$49.
And again, you haven't answered the question, so it, it actually makes the matter worse. If there was in fact an employee that was supposed to be regulating the serving of the alcohol at those tables, how did their patron get their hands on a bottle?
Didn't they serve by the bartender that served-
The bartender was serving, he, we're saying that that's not true, that this anonymous informant is wrong. There weren't people walking around with bottles.
Right, but whether too, whether they drank it out of a bottle, or whether they had the same amount of volume in the bottle that they had through shot glasses, it's the same amount of alcohol. I think it's a dangerous situation that, that, that happened, especially the first night. It was even more discouraging, that training was done, and, and, and nothing was followed whatsoever. I, I just think, um, it's just my, my opinion, I just, my two other members here, lest they have any other questions or concerns, that you do not open again until, maybe go back to tip school or something like that and see what you can do, um, but I, I don't, I don't, I'm not in favor of you, this is just too much to handle right, right now for, for me to actually say with a good conscience, could, you know, let's, let's slap you on the wrist, don't do that again, go home and open it tomorrow.
And that's not what I-
It's not in good conscience for me to even, even, even think of that.
With all due respect to the-
Yes.
The unfortunate, the, really the unfortunate thing here is, this is supposed to be a sports bar, and unfortunately, they made the error in judgment of trying to have like a live entertainment sort of, live atmosphere, and they, you know, in hindsight, it's probably something that shouldn't have happened, and they shouldn't have done it that way. I, I can tell you that they have been open, uh, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, the normal foot traffic that goes in there is- that goes in there is forty to fifty people at a time, I mean, in there at one time, and, you know, they're watching sports on the, on the, on the television, you know, there's music going on, but it's not a live music with a DJ and dancing and things like that. I mean, that's not what these, that's not what my client opened this place to do, you know, and he's not going to have a live event like this again, you know, in fact, if he ever considered it, the first phone call he would be making is to the chief of police to try to get a detail there, immediate, you know, to even start that process. You know, we're suggesting that, you know, that their employees maybe not only, I mean, if you're suggesting to do the safe certification again, but also maybe taking a class in crowd control, or at least understanding, you know, maybe seeing some of the problems that could, you know, arise to avoid, you know, such things like this again. They're, they're going to have a security, you know, security detail there, not detail, but security personnel there for at night, they are usually, well, they're usually open from the afternoon until 12, 1 o'clock on Fridays. I believe their license allows for longer hours, but they would cut back because I think it was Judge LaSapio that always said, nothing good happens after midnight, but, you know, we would, we would try to, you know, limit it to such a, you know, fashion that public safety wouldn't be endangered in this regard again.
We require details of other establishments because there were issues like this, you know? In fact, one of them, an alcohol establishment, we made them hire two detail officers every Thursday, Friday, Saturday, the board, when I was the police chief. And then there are even fast food places where we require the police detail, and then there are convenience stores where the town required them to have a detail, or the board was going to cut their hours. So the choice was, you know, and frankly, what this was, to be pointed on it, this is a money grab. Fifty bucks to get in the door, advertise it all over social media, attract people from not just Milford, but all over the place, and it turned into a horror show, as one would expect, you know?
Talk about the police detail, ultimately, we had five Milford police officers that showed up to the scene, and then all the other communities, including the state police, that backed us up. So what is a police detail going to do in a situation like this? More important is how do we, as a board, make sure that this, A, corrective action is taken, so that this doesn't happen again? You'd have a hundred police officers there, you still have a fight breaking out on the street in our community, which is unacceptable, totally. Were you there that evening, sir?
I was there the whole night, yes.
Were you aware that it was escalating out of control and...
Not inside of the location, it escalated due to, one of the, the accuser started the fight because he saw his girlfriend going with somebody else, so I mean, I can't control the outside parking, it was a mistake maybe not to hire a detail, that's my, that's my understanding, and you know, from the mistakes I learned, I'm trying, if you guys grant me, I'll try to coordinate with police, Milford Police, to see if, you know, if they, if you guys required, you know, security, Milford Police to be there on weekends, I'll support that 100%, I'm not, you know, running away from my responsibilities.
Chief?
So you're stating here that the cops didn't get into a tussle with anybody inside the club?
No, that was, that was prior, because we called the officers, we can even, can even call them here. The guy didn't want to leave, so we called the officers, can you remove the guy inside? Because the bar's closed.
You just, you just stated that all this happened, and I take homage to that, you stated that all this happened outside the club, and that's not the case, because there's video of the cops rolling around with somebody in the club.
Because he didn't want to leave.
Okay, but that's not what I'm saying, you said to them, none of this happened in the club, everybody left, and that's not true. So, I just want to be clear.
You're referring to the cowboy being...
I'm, I'm, call him cowboy, call him John Hancock, he said that it didn't happen in the club, that he was in control of the club, and everybody was outside, and he can't control outside, okay. You had a pretty big tussle in the club with the cowboy, you call him, so let's just be factual though, right? Okay, all right.
I'm not going to remove somebody, you know, physically inside the club, as you guys mentioned, he was a big, bigger dude, you know, so I mean...
Take a class in, in how to dial 911, I mean...
They were there.
What are my tips? The cop, the police should have been called long before that. You saw things going south, you saw it was turned in the wrong way, that's when your responsibility, you're the, you're the manager, you're the owner, you're the one that has to make that decision, and you don't wait till it goes downhill. You don't want it to go downhill, you want the police to show up at a point where they can cool things down, bring people back to an even level, and hopefully disperse them. Because it's pretty obvious that you folks didn't have the ability to do that, and you put them in a position where their ability to do it was extended for almost an hour. And it went on from there, because if you take what took place at the police station, and then you have a female, and I'll, I'll be very honest with you in upfront, you know, you have an employee that assaulted someone, I, I'm telling you, what we did with another establishment, you're suspended. You can't lay your hands on someone that way. There's difference between crowd control, and once it's out of your hands, you should have called the police, and looking at the picture of this lady, who took a punch to the face, there's no question about it. And she says it was one of your employees, and the chief says it was one of your employees, you're responsible. And that's the bottom line on that.
And you even have the person's, right?
The other concern that I have is that this becomes, the severity gets so severe that this becomes the main incident, or our police department is so focused on trying to get it under control, what about the rest of the community? What if a medical emergency came up, cornerstone?
Car accident.
Countryside.
Breaking.
Automobile accident, and we're so focused on trying to get Central Street, what about the other residents of this community? Doesn't seem fair.
Anything else?
I just, we, we don't want to do, we don't want to have the live acts, so even if you put a prohibition on it that way, my client would be fine with that as well.
Any other member?
In effect, I'd add, you have to take away the entertainment license, and, you know, and it encompasses a number of different things. I, I think the fact that an employee assaulted...
Yep, that, that, that alone plus the dangerous situation.
And then you, you take the situation itself, but, you know, and just looking back at how we've dealt with other establishments, and even other establishments, and frankly, that establishment, many years ago, when an individual, you know, who was removed from the premises assaulted some poor soul that was just walking up Central Street, had nothing to do with anything. And, and the board, Mr. Murray was on the board at the time, and the board said, no, the regulations say, you have a responsibility to that which occurs outside your establishment as well, if it emanated from your establishment. They removed him, they never called the police, and he was a known person that would engage people in that type of a fight, and he did, and he hurt this person badly. Again, it led to a suspension. I, I, I agree with my colleague, I, I think that there's room for retraining here, but you can't sell bottles of alcohol in that fashion, you just can't. And whether you had bartenders that were serving it, they bought it, that's, you can't sell it that way, it's a violation of the happy hour laws.
Especially to Mr. Kinsigley, the first night open, I would say too, maybe, you're not ready for an alcohol license right now, maybe you're not ready to, to, to use it the way it should be used. You know, like I said, it was a dangerous situation, it put our own officers in jeopardy, put the rest of the town in jeopardy, like Mike just mentioned, what if there was something else happening, when all of our police officers were down there trying to settle something? It's just something that I think, I, I, like I said before, in, in good conscience, I can't have you leave tonight, knowing you're going to open tomorrow. That's just, that's just me. Anybody else? If not, we can make a motion to see what we're going to do, whatever, anybody wants to decide, you want to continue this, you want to do something now? Like I said, it's something that we had a detailed report on, it was a dangerous situation, it was a situation that should have never happened, like we mentioned before, the people that were involved didn't walk down the street drunk, they got drunk there.
Right.
Okay, and aggressive there. And, like I said, there's a certain responsibility that a license holder must have, to uphold that license, it's, it's a privilege, it's not a right. Not, not anybody can have a lic, a license, you're going to be honored to have one, privileged to have one. And then you got to, you got to fulfill your responsibilities once you have it. And the first night isn't really something, open doesn't set a good example to us, like I said before, and I'm repeating myself for effectiveness, in good conscience, because it was the first night, I can't say, it's not going to happen again, it's too soon for me right now to say, open tomorrow, no problem, I can't do that. But again, I'm only one vote.
I make a motion that we suspend the license for five days, five business days, to be determined by the board, so I'm going to say consecutively commencing tomorrow. And that, provided that during that period of time, we're presented with training certificates for employees, I...
Would you want to make that motion to where he hires other security as well?
And I, I think that this is strong enough to send a message right at this point.
Okay.
And because I'll caution you in saying, I for one, this occurs again, you might as well come to town hall and turn the license in.
Agreed.
Because I'd move to revoke it, I, this was off the charts, for the first night, off the charts. It was planned, it was planned, it was a planned event, and the right measures weren't undertaken.
I second that, Mr. Chairman, and just for clarification, you make it sound like a fight, but in the report, when the police arrived on scene, they witnessed thirty to forty individuals in fights, in disturbances on the street. That's a heck of a lot more than one fight. It was out of control, out of control, and we have a responsibility to protect the citizens of this community, or anybody in our community.
I agree.
Yep, so I would gladly second that motion.
And I make that unanimous as well, so that's five day suspension on Mr. Kinsigley plus training. And then come back to us to let us know what happened, what transpired, how you're going to go through a process to correct this from happening again.
And bring the training to Mr. Valani, and his office will certify it.
And again, like, like my colleague, Selectman Alafon said, if it does happen again, you, before us, don't even try, just go up to Selectman's office upstairs and give your license back, okay? Thank you.
You won. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Want to do the other scheduled appointments?
Yeah, let me see what we have here now.
You have Brian and you have Rick.
Okay, Brian for...
Yeah, you have C1, you have C3.
Okay, let me get my papers in order.
And then if they're still not ready to go, we'll...
So C1, or the, why don't we go with Good Energy?
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay. Good idea, okay. Hey, next on the agenda, we're going to skip down to the C1. Regarding the municipal aggregation plan, like I said, there's certain steps that we have to take right now, and we started off with town meeting approval, a plan that was put together by our consultant, that plan then was put up for public review and comment, we did have a public hearing on it a few meetings ago, so now we're at here, and we, we have Mr. Rahman and, Ms. Rahman and Patrick Roach, representatives from Good Energy, which is our consulting firm, representing the town in preparation of the municipal electricity aggregation plan, which they'll be present to review the final draft. I believe after this final draft, it would go to the Department of Utilities, is that right?
Yes.
Excellent, so we're, so we're moving along, which is great. Okay, so you're on, can you explain to us what's been happening since the last time we met? Thank you.
Yes, thank you so much. So basically, the last time we met, we met for the public hearing, and we kind of, we had opened the public review for over a month, and we also met for the Department of Energy Resources for the mandatory D U R consultation before DPU submission, and that went really well as well. And today, what we were doing is that we, before the, the last time, we did not really ask for approval from the select board, because DPU had given out some guidelines for which we had to make some tweaks in our plan. And so that's why we kind of met, we made those tweaks, and we sat with our town representatives, and we made those changes, and I, I'll explain a little later about what kind of changes we made. So we're here to kind of present that plan to you for approval, and after the approval happens, we will submit it to the, to the DPU for, yeah, for submission. So basically, the kind of changes that we made were mostly based on terminology and alignment, like we changed certain words like standard product to default product, or customer notification documents to opt-out documents, stuff like that, and then we kind of realigned the plan a little bit, some plans, some portion of the plan that was supposed to be an attachment, be our non-attachment, stuff like that. And, and a lot of, and some of the attachments that we were supposed to give previously, we don't have to do that anymore. And besides that, the DPU wanted further clarification in certain parts of the, certain parts of the plan, like there's a section in the plan where we have to list out the local groups and media outlets that we chose, but we have to explain in the new plan, like why we chose them, how are they going to be beneficial to us, and stuff like that. And the, previously, we were supposed to repeat a lot of information in both the main plan and the education plan, but now, now the guidelines have actually given us a green light to kind of streamline some of the information, so that's something that we have been doing. So now the plan is actually a lot shorter, which is a good thing. And some of the changes we did not make was that the DPU was offering an expedited review, but that, for that to happen, we either had to commit to a launch date, like a specific launch date, or we would have to offer two products instead of three. But the problem with kind of having a pre-decided launch date is that if, for some reason, you know, we miss that date, then the town will be penalized, you know, and then they will be, they will go, and then, you know, they wouldn't be able to start the plan for another six months, so that would, so that would be a problem, and plus, offering only two products would be, you know, disadvantageous from an equity standpoint. So based on that, that's why we're not... So based on that, that's why we're not recommending the town to do that, you know? So that's some of the changes we did not make in the plan. So yeah, this was, this is basically the kind of changes we made in the new plan, so...
Very good, thank you. So like I say, if we made those other certain changes for an expedited plan, if we didn't meet a certain deadline, we would be held back six more months, is that what you were saying? Yeah.
Yeah, that's why we are proposing to not give a launch date at all, and to stick with three products, like we were initially supposed to do.
I see. So we'll go business as usual, and hopefully, we'll get that plan reviewed by the Department of Public Utilities, for the simple reason, it's something that we would like to have as soon as we can, but we want to do it properly, because this aggregation plan allows us cities and towns that are involved with it to more or less buy our energy, you know, in bulk, you know, on behalf of our residents. And when you do that, you can get it for a much lower price, which I think is needed more than ever, especially today. When do you think, I mean, so now, let's say this plan is approved, which it probably will be, so now we would go to the Department of Public Utilities, how long is it going to take for them to review that and actually put us into the next step?
I think it should take us, it should take about three months for them to review and stuff. It can take longer, or, you know, nobody knows, but we're kind of aiming that for the town, next winter, I think, would be the time, like the proposed time that the plan could start, or if it gets approved earlier, even next summer. So it depends. Do you want to add anything?
Yeah, sure. I think what Rafita said about the three months is maybe ideal if D P U, they said they want to move faster, and they have some, but, you know, probably, yeah, probably we'd be, we'd be flying at a fast pace, I think, if we got six months, and probably, like Rafita said, I think we'd be, I think it would probably be a good outcome if we were able to launch, you know, late next fall, kind of maybe like this time next fall, I think. Just being realistic, the D P U, it seems like they want to move faster, but we haven't seen any evidence of that yet. They are actually, they are having a first-of-its-kind in-person meeting in Boston in December, and we'll send some info to the town there, but it's to talk about the process for these reviews, because they know it's just so, so broken, really. So that's good that that dialogue is happening around the same time, but I think, you know, probably launching next fall would be like a reasonable, a reasonable target, I think.
Okay, so next heating season, then, right?
Right.
Next heating season, right?
Yeah. Yep, and I wish, I wish we could say it would be faster, and we will certainly be, you know, as your advocate, be pushing for everything we can, and identifying any opportunities where you could, you know, where you could push, or your elected officials could push, push D P U.
How about where this is an electricity program? Can you shock them into moving quicker?
Yeah, we haven't investigated that yet, but we'd like to brainstorm.
Anyway, thank you so much. And you need a vote on this to approve this plan?
Yes, to approve, to submit to the D P U.
Right.
Yes.
Say, I'd like a motion to approve this plan that we had done by Clean Energy, Good Energy, so they can submit it to the Department of Public Utilities for their review and hopefully approval?
I make a motion that we authorize Good Energy's to submit proposal to the D P U.
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
And make that unanimous. Very good, it's approved. Do what you've got to do for the next step, okay? Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Thanks, guys.
For everything.
Have a good night. Thank you.
Okay, next on the list would be Brian?
Yeah.
Okay. That would be, okay, we have a, let me just find that for Brian. Ricky, you didn't put that on the...
Yeah, no, C3, Town Council.
Okay, I don't have a C3, okay, oh, C3 here on, on the, okay. Town Council, Murray?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and this is on the...
Renegation update.
The injunction that the town received, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so as everyone knows, the board's been provided a copy, as well as all of the relevant town departments, on a preliminary injunction that the town received against the owners of a property located at 21 Franklin Street in Milford. And just by way of background, when I came here in January as Town Council, it was evident that the town was receiving a number of complaints from members of the community in various locations around town about different types of but-related activities in terms of large crowds, lighting, and other commercial structures that were set up in residential properties, activities involving sale of alcohol, sale of food, accumulated trash, other health hazards that were around. And the problem that we had, there were, you know, some complaints would go to the police, some would go to the Health Department, some would go to the Building Department, and there was clearly kind of a lack of coordination in terms of how the town as an entity was going to deal with this. So as you know, Mr. Chairman, you participated in many of the meetings that we held on a bimonthly basis, where we got all of the relevant departments in the same room dealing with these issues, Building Department, the Health Department, the Police Department. We also involved the Parks Department on a couple of occasions, and we basically shared information as to the complaints that we all had, and how we were going to combat them. Some involved just zoning violations, some involved just health violations. This particular one at Franklin Street was the gambit. This involved building, health, and criminal activity. So it was discovered, and again, there was great work done by all of the town employees. The Health Department was very involved, the Building Department, the Police Department, and it led to some undercover work. The primary property that really struck us all was the one at Franklin Street. It was generating the largest number of complaints, seemed to be the largest amount of activity. The town had gotten information that there was illegal activity in terms of a large amount of gambling, betting on these particular volleyball games, sale of alcohol, food, cigarettes, the whole deal. So the town was able to get a confidential informant, and then also through solid police work, surveillance, the town was able to make a bust, if you will, on this property, which led to certain criminal charges that are still pending, and are addressed in the criminal court by way of the Police Department. I think what's a little bit different than the past is, the town just didn't let it go with that. On top of it, we piggybacked a civil case for violation of zoning, building, and health, and health laws. That led to the case that was filed in the Housing Court, and of course, led by Town Council Emeritus Jerry Moody, who's had tremendous experience with this over the years. He did a great job in putting together the documentation. We went to court on a couple of occasions. Building Inspector was the lead plaintiff, he provided some excellent testimony, and the town now has an injunction, and I think it's significant, Mr. Chairman, just to read what the Housing Court has now prohibited on this particular property at 21 Franklin Street. There is a cease and desist and a prohibition for the retail sale of any food or other merchandise, a prohibition for the sale of any alcoholic beverage, a prohibition on the holding of events or tournaments for volleyball or other sporting activity, whether involving the exchange of money or otherwise, utilization of exterior lighting, not in full compliance with applicable electric codes, which interferes with the quiet enjoyment of neighbors in their homes and properties, a prohibition on the playing of amplified music that violates the provisions of the Milford zoning bylaw, and a prohibition, any other manner to engage in activity or permit others to utilize the 21 Franklin Street premises in any manner in violation of the Milford zoning bylaws. So this is now a key tool that we have in terms of enforcement. If there is any indication that this activity is occurring, we don't need a whole lot to just march up to the Housing Court and file a complaint for contempt, and bring them in on contempt charges, which could result in actions by the court, for the fines, could be imprisonment, but it's a, it's a very, I don't want to say easy, but it's a, it's a very targeted and effective tool that we have on this particular property, on this activity. So it should also be noted that the groups of departments that we've been working with, we continue to collaborate, we continue to identify problem properties throughout the town. These investigations are ongoing. I'm not going to be revealing any of the locations that we're working on. I can tell you that I will be in Worcester Housing Court Wednesday on another property, seeking similar relief, and we're going to just continue from that point.
Fantastic.
The police are continuing to work the criminal end on evidence that they find. Our Building Department is working in conjunction with our Health Department to cite violations. The one that I'm going on Wednesday is just zoning, that's the only violation we have on that, is zoning, and we have other properties queued that we're going to be similarly and systematically moving against. So as you know, we've all received complaints from folks in the community about these kinds of activities occurring outside of district or zones where they belong, and unfortunately, it takes time to rectify a situation like this, and it takes a concerted effort, where everyone has to be sharing information and working together. We have that now, and we're working towards this, and we're going to systematically go after problem properties, one by one by one.
That's fantastic, Brian, thank you so much. Like I said, Jerry, really, we can't thank you enough, and like I said, we got this task force started again for this reason, you know, again, and it's not an occasional party or gathering of friends and families. This is the consistency, the consistency of the crowd, the noise, the bright lights, hocking all over a neighborhood, and it's not just once or twice, like people will say, "Well, you guys have graduations." That's once a year. And I remember, if they're beyond 10 o'clock, they're stopped by the police, it happened to me. But on the other hand, like I said, it's that consistency that happens, and it's not going after any particular group or any particular sport, it's just that what has been going on has been causing big problems in the neighborhoods, and it's more or less using commercial use in a residential neighborhood. And again, like I says, this task force is great, it's now more focused and organized, and we can do a lot, and again, I can't thank the police, Legal Department, Health, and Zoning Department more. Like I says, we're working as a team, when you work as a team, you can accomplish great things, and that's what we're doing. But the public has to understand, be patient. We do get a lot of calls, a lot of emails and whatnot, but it's going to take time, because we need to gather the evidence to be successful in court, like you were.
And the public really is probably our best source of information. So I would continue to encourage the public, if they have concerns, to call the Building Department, call the Health Department, call the police, because that's very helpful, number one, towards identifying issues, but then, number two, going forward to try to get the kind of document that we did in this case, the injunction prohibiting this kind of activity. And you're right, it's the activity that's driving the action. And in this particular property in Franklin Street, there was illegal activity, there were thousands of dollars that were recovered in terms of illegal gaming, the sale of alcohol without a license, the sale of cigarettes, the sale of food, you know, that's all illegal activity. That's not, you know, the neighborhood cookout or the periodic graduation party. It's a systematic, controlled business, and that's what we've got to stop.
Exactly. Thank you so much. Like I says, we have that obligation to protect our residents and their neighborhoods, you know, their quality of life and well-being, and that's what we're trying to do, we want to get that across to the public. We're not sleeping on it, we're working on it daily.
And the support of the board and the administrative office has been very, very important in this regard also.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Great job.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, nothing on the other public hearing, Rick, huh?
Not yet, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All right, should we go to your report?
Sure, thank you, yeah. Yes, very briefly, just two items, very simple. Just a reminder for everyone, the town hall closes 1:00 p.m. on Wednesday, November 22nd, the day before Thanksgiving. We will be open normal hours, 8:00 to 11:00 a.m. on Friday, November 24th, 2023. And I just want to recognize, I received a letter from the Historical Commission, a thank you to a custodian of ours, Greg Yanovich, he donated flowers, and then planted the flowers, and did edging and landscaping of the flower beds at Memorial Hall. He did this on his own time, his own dime, so they want to thank him, and I just want to let you know that, of the work he did. And that's all I have tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Very good, Ricky, thank you. We should go to the new business with the acceptance of gifts too, while we're here.
Sure.
Okay, I got two right here, and that would be number F1 and 2. Okay, first, we have a, is a gift acceptance form that was filled out and given to us by Rose and Mike Mark Titlebaum, in the amount of $1,000 to the Milford Youth Center to support programming. And like I said, it was a very generous donation from Rose and Mark both. I knew them for a few years, their daughter and my son grew up together, and they were in the same grade. Anyway, any comments or concerns? If not, I'll entertain a motion to accept?
No, just other than to say thank you. So I make a motion that we accept a fantastic gift from Rose and Mark Titlebaum for the Milford Youth Center to support programming for $1,000.
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you so much. And Ricky, you do your usual by sending them a thank you.
Sure, yes.
Thanks so much. The next on the agenda is another gift acceptance from Noria Energy Corporation, the amount of $1,000 to the Youth Center to support programming as well. And like I said, they've been very generous too. Noria's, they have two locations in town, and they're very neat and clean, and they run a very good business. And again, their donation of $1,000 is greatly appreciated. Tom?
It was great for them to invite us to the grand opening of the newest place, right where Granacau was, right at Route 85. And, you know, I want to thank them, they did a fantastic job in inviting the community as well. But they did provide a gift of $1,000 to the Youth Center. So I make a motion that we accept the gift, $1,000 from Noria Energy Corporation for the Youth Center.
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
I make that unanimous, thank you for that. Any invitation to speak? Nothing on either? Okay, so we'll take that too. Under old, under new business as well, I mean, under the correspondence, before we get into the menorah lighting, I'd like to make a statement too, under that too, because the correspondence. I got regarding the migrant condition that we have now, and as again, as the migrant program continues, you know, local communities have been designated to more or less provide supplemental shelter to the migrant families. Migrant families are now staying at the Best Western on Fortune Boulevard in Milford, and we have joined a list of over 90 other communities that have been doing this as well, again, and it's due to the state's emergency shelter. Again, and it's through the state's emergency shelter system. Just to give a brief rundown on how soon this came about, on October 30th, our town administrator, Attorney Valani, was notified that 15 rooms were booked at the Best Western on Fortune Boulevard by the state. On November 2nd, Mr. Valani was notified that four families were placed in the shelter, and four more families were placed in the shelter on November 6th, for a total of eight families, representing a total of eight families, which would be, to stratify that, 36 individuals and 17 of school-aged children. On Friday, November 17th, this is past Friday, myself, Attorney Valani, Attorney Murray, John Erickson, Fire Chief Nelson and his command staff, the Board of Health Director, we visited the site, which was all planned. In other words, we made arrangements to visit the site. And we intended to meet with some state people to give us more information on what's going on. And we met with two members of the National Guard. That's all that were there at the time. And they informed us that there are now 24 rooms being used by 23 families. They tried to go four occupants per room, and this one particular family had more. That's why they had to have an extra room. And there right now, we have 44 children, 43 adults, and four infants. We were informed that most of the families are from Haiti, and two families at the time are from the United States. Just to remind everybody that Rick was emailed and informed that they were going to secure 15 rooms. During our interview with the two Godsmen, we quickly learned that communication with the state, emergency shelter program has been very poor. It's almost like, a quote from them, that the State Office of Housing dropped off these families at, off the motel and left the rest up to us. It should be noted that Milford officials do not want children and women sleeping in the streets. We understand that there is a housing crisis, and because of our right to shelter law, they have to stay in this hotel. But no hope, but to me and to the people involved, hotels are not the answer. To let the public know that we are working as a team to address the situation with the task committee that we have that was just mentioned, to get important questions answered, like public health and hygiene screening, mental health screening, vaccinations, proper queries, the number of occupants per room, any cost of the town funding from the state will be coming to us, the age and gender of the arrivals. We need more, do we need more funds for police and fire EMTs? How long is their stay? Brian Murray, our state representative and town council, has been most helpful in this situation and has been trying to get answers and communicate with state agencies, but right now, we don't have much to go on. I assure the residents that we will partner with the state and other local agencies so we can have a better organized and appropriate response to address the situation, and at the same time, address the needs of these families and the safety and well-being of our residents. Just to remind everybody, throughout the years, Milford has proven to be very welcome and accommodating to our new arrivals in the past. And we've been doing more than our share to provide for them. Just last, a few town meetings ago, we appropriated $4 million for affordable schools to deal with the overcrowding. So again, we've been very cooperative and very accommodating in to let the people know. We did not volunteer for this mission. You should not be responsible for the burdens of the border crisis. And again, that's what, I just needed the public to be aware of that because more and more people have been calling me. Social media has picked up on this. We just want to let them know. We know about it, we're on it, we're doing our best we can. I did also speak to Senator Roush today as well about the communication gap, and she's going to be doing something about that as well, or at least trying to. Again, it's not unique to Milford. The other cities and towns that we have been calling for advice have been experiencing the same lack of communication, and it's something that we're trying to correct. And again, to repeat myself, the residents got to know that we're doing our best to address this in the best way possible, to not only to protect the people that are here, that came here, but also to protect our residents' health and safety as well. Thank you. Okay, we do have another correspondence, would be Temple Beth Shalom. Mark Mann sent us a letter regarding, and he's the treasurer of the temple, requesting permission to place menorah in Draper Park for the Hanukkah celebration beginning Thursday evening, December 7, 2023. And his letter to us was, Dear Sirs, on behalf of Temple Beth Shalom of Pine Street, Milford, I am writing to request that we be permitted once again to place the menorah in Draper Park for the upcoming Hanukkah celebration. This year, Hanukkah commences the evening of Thursday, December 7, 2023, and therefore, we would request permission to place the menorah in Draper Park during the week prior to then, and to light each night until Hanukkah ends the evening of Friday, December 15, 2023. Assuming the air force said is acceptable to you, we will be conducting a town lighting celebration on the first night of Hanukkah at 6:00 p.m. on Thursday, December 7 at Draper Park. We would welcome your attendance at this event. As always, thank you for your consideration and support, and we look forward to seeing you. A motion to approve the placement of the menorah in Draper Park?
I make a motion that we approve the request from Mark Mann and Temple Beth Shalom to erect the menorah in Draper Park effective 12/7 to 12/15.
Right. Thank you, Tom. Michael?
Second there, Mr. Chairman.
And I make the unanimous. Like I said, God's light is bright, so, and that's a good thing for today especially. Thank you for that.
Mr. Chairman, while we're on correspondence, if I could?
Sure. Oh, yeah. Thank you, Tom.
We received a correspondence from the Finance Committee.
Yes.
Interestingly enough, it wasn't signed by anyone, nor, there were motions made and votes taken, but no indication of the members who were present or how the votes turned out. I did have the opportunity to watch the video of that particular meeting, and unless I missed it, I don't believe they ever took a vote on the second motion. If they found it necessary to send correspondence to this board as well as to the Geriatric Authority or Countryside Nursing Home. The correspondence to us was sent to remind us of something that we're very familiar with and have been keeping as best we can, an understanding of where things stand, and that's the finances, the Geriatric Authority, as well as, they forwarded to us the Enabling Statute, and there was a comment made during the meeting that we are the appointing authority of the members of the Geriatric Authority, and we can simply remove them for cause. Well, they didn't say for cause, that we could remove them. I'm adding for cause because that's what the law says. And the suggestion, I believe, was being made that we should remove certain members of that board for advocating, for maintaining that venue to serve the public. And I don't believe you can remove someone for cause for doing exactly what the Enabling Statute says they should be doing. So I appreciate them sending that to me and giving me their legal opinion on it, but we differ in view. Also, in watching that meeting, I will say that I believe, in my personal opinion, that the meeting itself really deteriorated to a point of really attacking and denigrating this board, as well as the Geriatric Authority, the folks that serve there. There were comments made that somehow this board, myself and you two gentlemen, muzzled the Finance Committee from speaking at the last town meeting.
I heard that too, and that's so far from the truth.
And that we should be ashamed, each of us and the moderator, for doing so. I knew nothing about the Finance Committee wanting to present anything about the Geriatric at the last town meeting. I never discussed it with anyone. I never heard of it. I had nothing to do with it. And I wish that, you know, a member, Chris Moore, had got on his facts straight before.
He should have at least called one of us because of that.
Before he sounded off.
And from what I heard, Tom, too, is that we actually told the moderator to tell shame in Korea. And I, first I ever heard of that was by someone else.
I never discussed it with the moderator. I never discussed it with anyone. I didn't even know that they had an intention to do that. And to go off in such a way, saying that there's a conspiracy, an outright defiance by this board, it shouldn't be allowed to muzzle the Finance Committee, that the Geriatric Authority is a dying dog, and I put that in quotes, went on to say how angry and mad he is, and that his rear end will be buzzing after this meeting for speaking out about the moderator and the select board muzzling the Finance Committee. Again, I don't know what he's speaking about, but if that's the way the Finance Committee's going to operate, I think that they have to reflect and take a real good look in the mirror where they're coming from. This, the Geriatric Authority is not solely a financial issue. We've said that from day one. It's a social issue. It's an issue of family support. It's an issue of who we are as a community that has to be addressed as well. And we've said, there's a balance there. Where that balance breaks one way or the other is going to be a decision for town meeting.
Exactly.
And we're not opposed to bringing it to town meeting. It's simply, it can't be this way without considering those other factors. And I found it very interesting that at least one member, maybe two, spoke about how their family members were treated so well at the Geriatric Authority in their final days of life. I raise this because I, it's.
It was wrong information?
I'm beside myself. I'm sure in.
I don't know why we were dragging to it.
The argument that there are non-residents that are at this facility, well, and went on to say, by the way, the argument from Finance Committee members, that unlike police, fire EMS, senior center, schools, you know, the impacts. Well, you know what? I've never seen a car accident in town where the police officer said, hey, you don't live here, so we're not going to help you in this car accident. I've never seen where the ambulance, they got back into the truck and drove away because the person's address wasn't in Milford. You know, if you're ill here and you need help, they're going to help you, you know. The number of overdoses that take place in this community, they're not all Milford residents, but we're still going to respond, and we're still going to get them help, and we still do that. We do it. We do it through community impact. How many kids from out of town actually go to our youth center? How many senior citizens that don't live in Milford go to our senior center? How many people go to our library that don't live in Milford? Why? Because you're required to allow them to do so, just like this facility. If you're going to take money from the federal government, Medicaid, and you're going to take money from the state, then you have to allow people in. And it doesn't matter what their address is. So that argument doesn't hold any water for me. And then, to posit the argument that, well, if you're going to support this, then we're going to have to cut schools, police, fire, you know? I didn't see any of that information in the memos that we were sent. I say to you, I think the approach during that meeting in dealing with this board on an important issue like this was offensive.
Sure.
It was offensive to suggest that we're somehow silencing people.
Not true.
Very, very far from that.
Right.
It's not your way or the highway. We're listening to all of the constituents, you know, whether they be Finance Committee, whether they be residents of the community who benefit, families who benefited from this service. I raise it because it came to my attention, and I purposely, after I received that document, I went and I watched the meeting. It was uncalled for. It was uncalled for, and it was, you know, we're going to attack because we want things our way. Well, it doesn't work that way.
Well, the only, well, the only way that would work, like I saw, I read their letter. I didn't see the meeting, Tom, and I thank you for your comments on that too, to straighten things out because we were being accused for something we didn't do. But on the other hand too, I mean, if they're talking about the amount of money it's costing us per year, which is true, it is very expensive, but it's not up to us to not fund it. That's why we have a town meeting form of government. There's eight precincts filled with their representatives from each precinct. That's a decision that town meeting makes. If town meeting does not want to fund anymore, that's up to them. If they want to fund, then the money goes. They're the ultimate decision-maker in this town, not the Board of Select, not the Finance Committee, the town meeting is, the elected town meeting members are. Thank you, Tom, for that information. Michael, anything or no?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add to what Selectman Olafman said in his statement. Very strong words here. Please accept this letter as formal notification that the Finance Committee no longer will be able to support in the future requests for funding by Countryside. And I don't need them to send me a letter. What I'd like to see is, I'd like to see what I've seen in years past. How about we start with all the members of the Finance Committee showing up at town meeting? And it's a, it's a very large committee, and at the last town meeting, I may be mistaken, but I believe there were five members in attendance. One member I know left halfway through. So what I would like to say is, how about we start with going back to the Finance Committee being an advisory board, which is what they are, and they do a nice job. And, you know, when an article comes up at town meeting, they vote favorable or unfavorable about it. And so let's, you know, in my humble opinion, the three of us who received this letter are always at town meeting. How about we start with trying to get all the Finance Committee members that we appoint back to town meeting and acting as a complete committee?
That's what I would like to say. Very good. Thank you. One of the things I was going to mention too is, I remember in the past when this was starting to come to life with the Geriatric Authority in the Countryside, we had a very successful meeting with various members of the Finance Committee, the Select Board, Attorney Valani, I believe Attorney Moody was there too, with the trustees of Countryside met. And we all, you know, they were all in minds together at the same time where we could, you know, answer different questions and concerns from each other there instead of going from one meeting to another. We got a lot accomplished those couple of meetings and whatnot. I think we should probably have that again. That way there, the Countryside trustees will be there to answer any questions the Finance Committee would have. We would hear what they have to say and move forward from there to town meeting. I think that's the way to do it. When we all get together and speak together as one, that way there, there's no more questions or anything that can be said that could be taken out of context. I think we should think of that in the very near future again and have that again.
Right. And I agree with you. You know, stop the finger pointing. And then, lastly, stop making statements that just aren't true, you know?
Yep. So what we'll do in the very near future, we'll get a meeting together, like I says, with the various boards that are concerned with this and that are active in this. And we could see if we can, you know, get things going and move forward from here without any hard feelings, okay?
You should.
Thank you. So what we can do now, we can see Attorney Solomon.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, if we could step back.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, if we could step back, there are a number of residents who I know want to attend and Attorney Solomon must have got a tailwind or something, but she's here a lot earlier than I anticipated. So a number of residents are coming down. So could maybe step back, maybe do exec real quick and come back.
Sure, sure. Yeah, we got, who's doing the, who's doing the PFAS?
I am.
Oh, oh, you are? Okay.
I'm going to do that myself.
All right. So why don't we go right to our executive session, okay?
Well, okay, but you'll have to.
Take a vote and announce that you come back to open session.
Exactly.
It won't be long, Attorney Solomon. It won't be long.
Okay.
Sorry.
So again, first of all, we should dissolve this meeting.
No, I'm just going to take a vote. You're going to go back. Whatever issue we have, we're going to announce you're coming back into.
Oh, okay, okay. All right, I got it right here.
Kim, and I make a motion to go into executive session for discussions, the town administrative concern in PFAS litigation, the listing of the matters above, those reasonably anticipated by the chair, which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may be discussed. Other items may not be brought up for discussion. These matters are a concern of litigation, therefore it could place the town at a disadvantage with regard to that litigation. I make a motion.
In your time. Motion has been made.
Second by Mr. Chairman.
Motion moved and second by Michael. Roll call vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Motion unanimously approved to enter into executive session on a roll call vote. Motion to adjourn this meeting.
No, no. You're going to announce that you're going back.
We'll come back into session.
Executive session.
All right.
Not adjourned yet.
Okay, we won't adjourn then. Okay, the select board will be returning into our regular. Doing business as TD's Pub. And we're holding this hearing pursuant to general laws, Chapter 138, Section 34, and other applicable law to consider whether to modify, suspend, or revoke the license issued to Turtle Blessed LLC, doing business as TD's Pub. Police Chief Robert Tazino is also present. The reason for the hearing is due to a fight that occurred inside TD's Pub on April 23rd, 2023, a fight that occurred outside TD's Pub on August 20th, 2023, and a disturbance by a patron inside TD's Pub on July 8th, 2023. Our special counsel, Judge Moody, is also here, who will be conducting this hearing along with Attorney Melanie Solomon, who will appear on behalf of TD's Pub. Attorney Moody?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, you, you folks have gotten the notice, obviously, and provided to you by Attorney Valani were a number of reports that you have, which detail the incidents you just referred to, Mr. Chairman, together with a number of other incidents over a period of like about eight and a half months, from April 1st, 2023 to October 18th, 2023. And what you see on those reports is about 115 references. I won't call them incidents. There's about 14 that are really incidents of fights or disturbances, as you have in the reports. There's number 11 parking situations investigated, and 90 property checks, which, the property checks, you see that, a lot of them happened during business hours. And the chief would tell you that a lot of those came, maybe half of them became as a result of citizen complaints to the police department. The officers would go down and investigate, make sure there were no problems. And they were generally reported as no problems. So you'll, you'll see them there. There are a number of others where just, where officers are just being proactive and going down to investigate to make sure there were no problems. So again, of those 90, nobody would say that the 90 were all incidents at the establishment. They weren't. But there were probably half of those, if not more. Kim, was a result of citizen calls, citizen complaints about activities at the establishment. So again, you've got all those reports and I, I believe they're all provided to Attorney Solomon. So those, those are what you have to consider in terms of whether or not you, part of what you have to consider in terms of whether or not you're taking the action in relation to this license. Again, some citizens may have more to say about that. But another aspect of it that, that needs to be addressed, has to do with the deck out back. You also saw, I think Attorney Valani gave you a copy of, a review that I did, concluded, as I'll explain, that the authorization to utilize that deck is, was improper under zoning by law. So you're going to have to address that. And just to help you in that regard, a few photographs from the police department, they drone up for other purposes, so we did some photographs that helped explicate what we're talking about when it comes to the deck. So those are taken really just this past Thursday. You know, obviously an overhead view during the daytime, and even one at night times, you can get an idea of the lighting conditions out back where the deck is. The deck is obviously to the rear. And to get it even closer, taken from the abutting property is a picture of the deck itself. And the deck came to be in 2004, about 2004, a permit was applied for to construct a sun deck and it was issued by the building department at that time. Problem is, it shouldn't have been because this is a residential neighborhood. The building dimensionally was and still is significantly non-conforming. And under the zoning by law, that required a special permit in order to construct that deck. However, it was done under building permit that was issued after 10 years ago by the town, which is the power to enforce as to the construction. But the construction is one thing, that's different from the use.
Exactly.
And the use is also non-conforming in that area, which is residential RA district, and it's a restaurant slash bar. And to expand the use of the property onto the deck, even though the deck can, can be there, it shouldn't have happened. And my, and, and your board mistakenly voted to, the last license, to basically authorize that because of a plan that was submitted to you that did show the deck. And you approved that application, which included a plan that showed the deck as a drinking area, and you shouldn't have. And I think that came about as a result of confusion over COVID rules, which back at this time, before that, were obviously the governor's emergency powers were authorizing outdoor service. So I think what happened is your board wants to speak for you. Your board got confused by that, by the application, and you granted that, you granted that authorization to serve on the deck. You shouldn't have. So I think at the very least, you probably need to modify, within the scope of what you've noticed here, you need to modify the, the license to forbid utilization of that deck for sales of alcoholic beverages or food unless and until they apply for and get a special permit from the zoning board of appeals. That should have been done originally, it should have been done the second time. And that's obviously important because that gives the neighbors and others a chance to have input into the situation. Maybe conditions imposed or the board could determine not to do it at all. So again, I, I think that's one thing you absolutely should do through this is to vote to modify the, the existing license to eliminate service on that deck. But getting back to the original point, your board has to consider based upon the reports that you have in front of you, whether or not that merits any further discipline in terms of this license.
Right. In other words, the deck really would have no, like a reason for the fights and everything else.
It's a separate issue. It's a separate issue from the incidents. I mean, I'm sure people would, maybe would tell you that there are problems on the deck, but it's a zoning issue and it's an issue of mistaken issuance of your, on your part of a license that you should return to the way it should be under the zoning by law by modifying that license to eliminate sales on there. Again, unless and until they receive special permit authorization with the zoning board of appeals.
Right. And like, you know, just, just for the record, too, this is the second time, you're before us within several months, right? You were here, you were here once, once before.
Yes. We took your note.
Right.
And anytime something does go not as planned, we dial 911 ourselves.
Okay.
Because we, we do not want to find ourselves in the same issue that we had before. And you said you are our resource. So anytime someone is not listening to, like, I'm sorry, you need to leave, you're not behaving yourself, we are, I tell people all the time, my favorite three numbers are 911. You, you can either listen and leave because you're not behaving yourself or whatever, or I will dial. Sometimes they challenge me.
You know what, too? There was one incident I read, I guess some guy came in with a hockey, Goldie hockey mask.
Yes.
And he started playing a cowbell.
Yep.
Just a hockey mask and the cowbell alone, wouldn't that have been a red flag to ask him to?
He came in, he was never served by us.
Okay.
He was acting that way and I wasn't sure how it was being received because we did have music going on at the same time.
Yeah.
And he claims that it was his friend and he was playing along with him. But then after that, when like the hockey mask was taken from his body and thrown at a customer, I only heard the noise and I was like, what was that? And I went over and they were like, that, that just got thrown to us. So that's when.
Okay.
He's no longer allowed in our establishment because we don't tolerate that kind of stuff.
From what I can also understand, he is not allowed in most of the establishments now.
Really?
That's.
Okay. Well, that's good. You know, and I know we had Attorney Solomon guide you and help you out, too, with your responsibilities.
Absolutely, yes.
Not the last time, too. Attorney Solomon, anything you can let us know and tomorrow, let's show cause why we should or should not suspend, modify, or revoke this license?
Yeah, so I did on February 19th, and I notified the board after I had trained the entire staff on their responsibilities with the liquor license for things that go on in their establishment, as well as for things that go on immediately outside their establishment resulting from their patrons. I have done random checks of the establishment on my own, which I've been doing for businesses that I represent who have to come before the board of selectmen. I can tell you most recently, I think it was about a week and a half ago, because I knew I had already been apprised of the fact that there was going to be issues related to parking, just addressing that. I, I've been driving down West Street. I have no reason, I mean, I'm sorry, Water Street, I have no reason to go down there. I typically go down West Street. And I actually ran in very quickly and notified the owners, for example, that there was a vehicle that was parked halfway in the crosswalk. I had no idea whether that belonged to their establishment or not, but random checks to observe activity going on outside and inside the premise that can affect the neighbors and the complaints that are coming before the board. I also issued an order of no trespass to Mr. Robert Scott. He was an individual whose behavior within the establishment was inappropriate. And I've told the owners to notify me that when somebody's behavior rises to that level, let me know. And I'm issuing orders of no trespass as I evaluate the conduct of the patrons who are behaving in this manner. I also read the entire package from Rick Valani. And what I do see in the package, for example, one of the fights that occurred in April of 2023 is that the owners were interviewed and the person, the subject party, was asked to leave the premise by the owners, even though the police had been called. I can tell you that, that in conjunction with what Attorney Moody has said about the deck and Selectman Mazza Kelly with, you know, some questions, is the deck contributing? The Lowlies live, my understanding is directly behind TD's. My understanding from looking at some of the documents provided by Attorney Valani, as well as my client's attempts to address their concerns, is that the Lowlies did voice concerns to the police department. There were complaints filed by them, both occupants of that premise. And this evening, and I want to share this with you because I only got it this evening, I've received two separate emails from the, one from the Lowlies. So they, they are directly behind it. I'm just going to read that to you and I am happy to send it to you through Rick Valani. I live at 72 Water Street and I've shared a driveway with TD's Pub. In the past, we've had issues with cars blocking the driveway, noise, and people trespassing on our property intoxicated. Since Joan and Matt Rich have taken over the bar, we have had excellent communication and less issues. If there's an issue, they will address it. We have really seen a big change in the patrons due to the management that is Sheila Lally. And she sent that email this evening. There was also another email that was provided to me this evening from an Eric Lovejoy, who had indicated that he has been going to TD's for several years, has noticed some differences since the change in ownership. And he's noticed improved conduct by the patrons from prior ownership. And he's also noted the noise complaints, that while, you know, there was noise upon, you know, entering, he could hear it out on the outside, it was relatively faint. And again, I'm, I'm happy to forward these to you. I can also say that both Joan and Matt have been diligent with going outside and trying to identify the vehicles that are disturbing the neighbors, potentially blocking their driveways and crosswalks. I've shared videos as well as still shot images through Attorney, Rick Valani earlier today. I've asked him to forward this to you and I know that that is not the most significant issue, but it is an issue that disturbs, disturbs the, you know, the residents' use to the quiet enjoyment of their property if they can't access it or there's no safe way to cross the street. So what I would suggest is that, you know, at this point, I would ask that no action be taken, that the owners be put on notice. I think that they are doing what they're supposed to be doing to address the concerns. I know that they've tried to work with some neighbors who aren't, who don't necessarily want to engage with the owners. I encourage them to engage with me if they have concerns. I'm happy to conduct meetings in my office or even at the restaurant if they want to point things out to me. Joan and Matt's intent here is not to disturb the residents' right to have quiet and peaceful use and enjoyment of their property. If there's an issue, they want to work with the community so that their business is welcome. And I think so far, with everything that they've done and actually listening to the advice that I've given them, they've done that.
One of the things, too, to mention, too, like we, in the report, it is an RA zone, which is mostly residential. You know, you do have Jean's Variety and your place used to be, when I was a kid, the old Club Royal, and it was owned by the St. Guido family, you know? And then we've, across the street, you have that, another store, used to be Sadie's Pizza Place. But that's about it, really, you know what I mean? That you have in that area, besides, you know, down toward the main street area where you got the gas station and the old, and the, and the, and the meat store. But like I said, it's, it's something that, you know, and I know there's other stores or retail establishments that would cause parking, but they're in and out. You know what I mean? You're not going to hang out for a few hours at Jean's Variety unless you work there. And the same thing, you know, with the store across the street. So like I said, you should be aware, like Attorney Solomon says, of those who, who would more or less interfere with the quiet enjoyment and quality alike of that neighborhood. Because like I said, it's not that you're downtown, you know, you're in an RA zone, which is mostly residential. Tom?
Do you have anything else counsel that you'd like to offer?
Yeah, so I, I will say, I, I'm well aware of what Attorney Moody has set forth with the patio and I'm going to be working with my clients on that. Given the legal nature of it, I would say that at this time, it would be appropriate to address that particular issue in terms of whether it is proper to be used in the manner in which it is. I understand the history of it. After getting the letter from Rick Valani, I am happy to work with my clients on temporarily suspending use of that in a manner inconsistent with what it's being used for now. So I'm happy to do that and work with them on acquiring whatever special permits. With the zoning board need to be presented to see if it can be reinstated in the manner that it has been used or modified from the manner that it has been used.
Right. I mean, I, I think that the zoning board would have the right to allow them, would give them the right, a special permit to come back to us to determine whether.
Your board issues the liquor license, obviously. But the zoning board should have come first with a special permit and then your board could decide whether or not to issue the, the, that license. I mean, I think, I'm pleased here Attorney Solomon, I think, is, we concur, I think, in the result. I think her approach is, you know, trust to her client to do that. And the other approach would be your board to modify it without prejudice to come back when they come, when they get special permit.
And, and the continued guidance, too, with Attorney Solomon.
Oh, absolutely. Well, you can't tell someone whether they're going to hire for a lawyer, even though she's very good.
Well, they're doing it now.
Even though she's very good. I don't think we can tell her.
In all due respect, before we took over, nobody was allowed to drink out back because he never, like, got proper or whatever. So it's just for people to smoke so that they're not out in the elements. We didn't know that we could have people drink or not drink, sorry, have people drink.
I know what you're saying.
Until it was offered to us. Do you want to use the deck? And I was like, oh, heck yeah. Let's do that.
And I know those decks were put on a lot, too, when the State Department of Public Health passed a no smoking and eating establishment.
But also COVID.
That was during COVID.
COVID, we had tents and you name the restaurant.
Right, absolutely.
You know, you go down on Depot Street, the tent's still there, you know? So it's a matter of, really, it's really a matter of the use and it's a matter of the impact on the neighborhood itself. And, you know, if we look back at the prior incidents, you know, they started there on that deck.
And to be honest, to try to allow drinking to be on the back deck, we didn't try to have it be, oh, no, we just go ahead. It was more of a, to protect if someone was to walk out there and have a cigarette with a beer. And it, it seems as though now it just has become.
Gathering place with drinks.
The difficulty is, it, it's the spot where you've had your biggest headaches and where the neighborhood had or has their biggest headaches and where the police have had their biggest headaches. Because even with that serious incident when we were first here.
Yep.
It started on the deck.
Right.
You know, and you can go down the list and, you know, read through the materials and the decks are bad. the deck's a bad factor. It's a bad factor for you. This is, Mr. Chairman, just to remind, this is a public hearing after a residence.
We're going to ask Mike too if you have anything to say first.
Very good, thank you.
Please, Chief.
Appreciate it.
Michael?
The question that I have is, and I saw that when the comment was made about the fights, you had a little bit of a look on your face. Is it, the complaints of the fights, have all the fights been predominantly on the deck, or have there been some inside the restaurant, or the pub, or?
That we know of, we know about that first one, that was, that was our first one, actually, first one. So the fact that fighting is never okay in my life, just because of my childhood, and it, it's just not anything we would ever allow. And when it does happen, I mean, at that point, I didn't know what to do, because you just want to stop it and get in the middle of it, where, you know, we were advised by you guys, 911, it doesn't matter what's going on, 911. And it's like, okay. No, it's just, things do happen, and certain people that aren't liking seeing other people, like, that stuff does happen, but we stop it as best as we can, and if we can't, you're called. And my tagline is, where you are more like family. It's all about love. And I heard you say earlier, it's a privilege, not a right, that we are in the town of Milford. TD's, like, it's near and dear to our heart. We didn't change the name because of how we honor and respect what was done prior. And we're grateful, and if there's anything we could ever do, like, neighbors, 911 doesn't have to be, or the business line, like, whatever you need, I will make happen to the best of my ability.
We live right in that same neighborhood, so there's no reason we want to have anything wrong.
Like, we, I wear my heart on my sleeve, I, like, I'm very grateful for this opportunity in life, and I am blessed beyond measure, and I am grateful to everyone that wants to protect everyone that comes to TD's, because they're now our family. So, like, whatever we can do, we will do it to make sure that everyone is happy.
Chief?
Yeah, I agree that, you know, the owners here, they're very amicable to try to work with people. I think that your biggest problems there are parking. I think that's, you know, on the outside of it, we get a lot of complaints about that, and it's tough. It's a tough area. There's no two ways about it, you know? And I know they do their best to, I know that for a fact, that they do their best, you know, like Attorney Solomon goes there, you know, and clandestine, if I will say, you know, I do the same thing. When I have a bunch of complaints about any location, I go there off duty, take a walk, take a drive in a personal vehicle. And I've seen them out there, trying to, you know, copy down license plate numbers to go inside their establishment and have people move. And they didn't even know I was there, I didn't tell them, and I think on this night in question, they didn't, there wasn't even a call to the Police Department. I think they were, you know, they're doing their best, you know? As far as the out back thing goes, you know, I agree with, you know, Attorney Lawfman, I think that they had a lot of problems there, and I think it's kind of like when the people are out of sight, out of mind, you know, sometimes people try to take liberties to act as they want, but I don't think they have a lot of that in there, you know? But I think they're very easy to work with as proprietors.
That's good to know.
Right, and if people are blocking someone's driveway, as you know, Chief, you just tone them. You know, and 300 bucks later, they learn a valuable lesson. And really, you know, most streets, and you've recommended several, where you and I had a discussion, a small street, and the trash truck couldn't turn because it backed on the corner. So, I mean, if we find that we put up a sign that, and we've done that in some locations, I don't want signs all over the place. But if we do signs on those particular corners and people still ignore the signs, and they consider a $25 ticket as a pretty reasonable parking fee, then we'll change it to toe zone. And then you go up and they get the 25 plus another 300. You know, at least in my experience, you get towed once and you learn.
For sure.
You know, it's a big hit. So, you know, I mean, do I expect these folks to go out and enforce parking regulations on the public way? I for one don't.
No, I just want to say, they do make an effort, that's why.
I know that, I know they do, from everything you've indicated, as well as what I've read.
When the customers are there, you know.
I just, you know, it's, what if it's not one of their customers? Now you got a situation.
There's other establishments in the area. This is a public hearing, we have some public here, anybody want to make a comment? Yes, sir? You can go.
Just have a few words.
Oh, sure, go ahead.
First about the parking. I live on the narrow street, and I have a hard time to go in my driveway. It's not one day, it's about every day. Even parking front of my driveway, it's kind of metal.
And you can't fit your car in there?
That's actually, a lot of times back and forth.
Right, right.
One day is fine, but when you have to deal with this every day, that's kind of tough.
And where do you live?
Lee Street.
Oh, Lee Street, okay.
And another problem is here is the live music, and the karaoke, the live music.
Karaoke.
Karaoke?
The noise so loud.
Okay.
You know, they didn't bear on this couple last days, but they didn't, but like, a couple weeks ago, it's something every day.
Yeah.
Very loud noise, big fight on the street, late night, around 2:00 AM. I have some videos from my camera, you know?
Okay, that's good to know.
My daughter started complaining about the noise. She's kind of have a heavy sleep.
Yeah.
She started complaining also about the noise.
But luckily, in the past couple of days, it's been okay, a little better.
Well, the last week it didn't bear, was no live music, but a couple weeks after.
Okay, something to consider. Yes, sir?
Yes, my name's Jay Adrola. I live across the street. And to the contrary, what these people are saying, they play that music, that karaoke, Sunday night, I, you know, Saturday, Friday, and Saturday, I understand, it's a bad, you know? Sunday night, work nights, Monday night, they got that karaoke, they got an open mic, it's blasting, I can't even open my windows.
Is it late, late at night?
Late at night, 12, 1 o'clock in the morning.
Okay.
Blasting, I've called and complained about it. As far as parking, they blocked my driveway going into my house. I live right on the corner of Lee and Water Street.
Okay.
I got pictures just last night, vehicles in the crosswalk, just last night, contrary to what the counselor is saying. They're arguing, the bar breaks up at 2:00 in the morning, they're out there sometimes after 3:00. They walk out of there with open containers, they flip them on my lawn. It's problems all the time.
Okay, Jay, thank you. Anybody else?
I just like to second everything that Jay says. He and I, we share the same house.
Okay.
On the water, and Lee and water.
Yeah.
Sometimes wake up in the morning, he goes outside to get cars on the driveway, he see open bars on the front lawn. You know, we got a driveway, I only got a little piece up on my house, in front of the house, and the fence. You see people there, and I, they leave the bar, they go there between cars, they pee there, you know, as.
Okay.
For us, and the parking situation, same thing, like I say, we share the same driveway, you know? I got four cars in my house, you know, we got four people there, we got three. So we have to do, you know, various maneuvers to park, yeah, to park in it.
Sure, sure.
I happened, you know, to add like a situation, that someone hit my truck on my own driveway, and planted, you know, didn't.
Thank you.
Probably, maybe someone left the bar, maybe, you know, it was just a, you know, some driver, but the thing is, a lot of cars. Yesterday, I had to ask a gentleman, was going to the bar, can you move your car closer to the curb, because the way you park it, you know, the chance that they hit our cars is like 100%. And he was kind enough to go back there and move his truck closer to the curb.
Okay.
It's like a nightmare.
Yeah, yeah, okay, thank you for that information as well. What I was going to suggest, Jay?
Yeah, you got to do something about that music.
Well, I was just going to mention something.
It's loud, it's really F. loud, and my bedroom's right there, 11, 12. What's the noise statute?
Right, what I was going to suggest, is there a point where you could put like a time limit on your karaoke, like, for instance, where it is, like I said, an IRA area, you know, where you have more residential homes there as well, where if you can say maybe until 9:00, 9:30, or whatever, instead of the.
Just make a couple suggestions. I presume Attorney Valani that they have an entertainment license.
Right.
And the notice you got tonight is for liquor only, so it wouldn't authorize you to affect the entertainment license tonight.
Well, no, I wasn't going to pick that, I was just going to like, give a suggestion, that's all.
Well, but yeah, but they can come back, if, you know, if you want to set up a hearing on whether or not to modify the entertainment license, you can do that. And that'd give them time to think about possible resolutions and possible solutions.
Okay, I think that's fair.
Rather than try to work something out right here, set up a hearing on that question, people come back on the noise issue, have that out, and if you want to then modify or revoke the entertainment license, you can do that after proper notice.
Right, and the only reason why I'd like to have that is because of the zone it's in. Like I says, you know, it's not a non-conforming use, but, you know, but it's like one. You know, the majority of the properties in that area are residential. People who go to work, come home, that's their home, you know, and whatnot. So it's something that we should think about and, you know, talk about at a later date.
The entertainment side of it, I mean, there's things you can do from soundproofing materials and other things, tone it down some. I mean, you have to run your business within the four walls, that's the bottom line. Or, as your counsel said, you're disrupting everybody, that's their daily lives, you know? As, you know, Jay said, you know, he's going to bed to get up to go to work. Someone else mentioned they had a young child, and I just, you know.
With all due respect.
Our hope is that you're hearing what we're hearing on that issue.
And I do understand, and I know that what our entertainment license does, and yes, I will admit, I found out that karaoke was getting loud. And then once we, I talked to the officers that were showing up, we started shutting the windows. And I understand during the summertime, we had the windows open. We mean no way do we want to try to disturb the neighborhood at all. Our open mic, open mic ends at 10 o'clock on Wednesday nights, and we have had loud, live music, but we haven't had live music go to 11 or 12 o'clock. Karaoke has gone until midnight, and yes, I do apologize. But once we found out that it was becoming loud and becoming a problem, shut the windows down, and I just talked to them last night, I'm like, you have to turn it down. I actually monitored the decibels outside.
And that's key, and, you know, with the Portuguese picnic, and with the tradesmen, and those different events, I would actually, as the chief said, I would go into the neighborhood and stand in front of his house, and stand in front of other people's houses to see how clear it was to me. And then I would contact the officers on site and tell them, start to turn it down until I was comfortable that it really wasn't shaking their houses. I mean, you know, and those are events that took place once a year, you know? So if it's every weekend, it grows old, you know? So I think that, you know, taking a look at some other ways, not just closing the windows, you know, they make soundproofing shades today, you can put, you know, and other materials, but please consider doing some things. As far as people finding bottles and things of that nature in their front yard, look, we've dealt with small businesses, major corporations in town to say to them, if you're, if that stuff is coming from your customer base, then yeah, you have to have, whoever does your cleaning, or someone go out and just kind of scout the neighborhood, right? Talk about being a good neighbor, if you pick up the bottle from his front yard, then his daughter doesn't end up finding it and end up, you know, getting cut with glass. So it's really a matter of working together, and it sounds like, from the reading of the email, which is very encouraging, and some of your willingness to really deal with people, and I know, I take you on your word, I know your word is good in that respect, I believe that you are trying to do those things. I just ask you to really listen to what your neighbors are saying and work with them on, how can we make a difference to make a better neighborhood?
Absolutely.
I mean, we did it with their neighbors in the back, they have my cell phone, they have his cell phone, they can have my cell phone. Like, anytime there's any issue, reach out to me, morning, noon, or night, I have to be awake anyway, like, it's, I want everyone happy.
That's good to know. That's all we want, right?
Yeah, I, when I came to this meeting, the reason I'm here is that I happened to bring up a casual conversation with Matt and Joan over a week ago. And I had no idea that the depth of thought was going on at this meeting until I got here. And I just wanted to say that I know for a fact that there is no bartender in that pub that lets anybody walk outside with an open container. I've seen them chase people out the door to make sure their kid right back in. I also know that.
I've seen it for myself.
And I also know that most of the time I walk in there. I can't hear anything until the doors open. And there were a lot less people outside that pub now than they used to be. And I started going there in 2019, I think. And nowadays, even if it's a real busy night, and the bartenders aren't able to keep an eye on everything going on, these two are there. They, you talk about, like, people that are actually involved in their business, it wasn't necessarily like that before, because it couldn't be. When they bought the business, they're only not there when they don't need to be there because it's slow, and they're letting the staff run things, but they're there every night, and they watch the place like a hawk. And if someone comes in there and they know that that face is trouble, I've seen Matt get up, go right over to the guy, get him right out the door, and that was the end of it. No one even knew what happened. That's my observation from going there as a patron.
Thank you. Michael?
Just a question for Attorney Moody. Does a license carry a capacity level?
There's a, there is a capacity set by the building.
95.
It's not a registered license, but it's set by the building property, yeah.
Have you ever monitored that?
Monitored 95, I haven't monitored 95. I couldn't.
I called the building inspector, they told me it was 95.
It was actually dropped down to 95. Not that it matters, I mean, I'm still crowd control certified. I had to be crowd control certified when I worked, coordinated before.
Well, the reason I ask that question is some of your concerns caused by overcapacity. You can't manage the crowd.
Oh, no.
No, no. I would not say there's been 95 people in there.
Yeah, we've never had, no.
You wouldn't be able to move on Water Street if we did.
Well, if that's the case, then how do people end up on the outside?
On the outside, huh?
Leaving, or are people hanging around outside? Because the pub is too crowded.
Oh, no, no, no.
Oh, no, they're saying closing time, Michael.
Closing time.
Okay. And that's something, you know, when you see those property checks, we do them at places around town, you know, and sometimes it's just for that reason. You know, there's residential, residences right where the businesses are, so the chief will direct, get the closing I want, this officer here, two officers there. And it's just to cause people to move along so that they disperse and people aren't aggravated by people that just want to stay put. So that's why the last hearing, when I saw all the property checks, that doesn't influence me, that's him being proactive, the Police Department, and working with the business owners. So if you remember, Mike, you're on the board, and Brian, and I would send you monthly reports, and different businesses that were experiencing difficulties, not because they were running a bad business. They were super cooperative by way of example, done condones, I mean, they couldn't have been more cooperative, but the people going in and using their bathroom facilities and, you know, for drugs and other things. So that's why you do those property checks, and so I don't fault the owners of the business for that. I think it's a responsibility of the Police Department. And secondarily, I encouraged, and I know the chief does, our business owners to ask for that help. That's what we're saying to people. Call us, we want to work with you. Rather work with you to be proactive than have a problem. At this point, I think your major headache is the deck. I do want to address that on this evening. Put that to a motion too. So I would make a motion that. So I would make a motion that we now restrict that sales of alcohol, possession of alcohol, consumption of alcohol cannot be done on the deck. That the business is confined to the four walls of the structure.
Makes sense.
And I, that's the motion.
If I can, I'm just, is that like a permanent prohibition or is subject to the zoning board of appeals?
I wouldn't make it subject to the.
You can certainly, you can say, modify the license, you made it altogether. Or you can modify it subject to zoning board of appeals.
My sense is to modify it and then they have a right to go to the zoning board of appeals and then they can go back to us and we can reconsider it.
That's right.
I just want you to know so that you're happy, we won't be doing that. If you don't want alcohol out there and you feel like that's going to prevent anything from happening bad out there, aside from smokers.
Yeah, we're fine with it not being.
No more alcohol forever.
Well, that's good. Attorney, thank you, makes it a lot easier. Thank you for that.
So there's a motion on the table.
A motion to.
Second that?
And I make it unanimous too.
And again, I think you're on the right track as far as working with your counsel as well as working with your legal counsel, as well as working with people in the neighborhood. And I think that you heard some things tonight that we also heard, you know? And I don't think any of us would want to have those things taking place, you know, loud karaoke till midnight, 1:00 in the morning.
Completely disturbing.
You know, it grows old and some people aren't as good as singers as they think they are. It's the other thing.
So. On the other hand too, any of the neighbors too, that feel as though that they're still being affected, just let us know too, so we can convey that too. And of course, like, like the owners mentioned too, don't be afraid to speak to them personally because they'll, it'll be, it'll cut out the middleman and they'll, they'll have quicker results as they guaranteed that there is a role for you as well.
And keep the police chief informed.
Exactly.
Because he's willing to work with any of the businesses in the entire community. I think keeping him where he's up to date of what's taking place. I mean, you know, these gentlemen mentioned things that have occurred just this past weekend or this past week. You know, please reach out to Chief Tassino and I can promise you're going to get a, you know, a response, a result. I know the chief was looking at the issue as far as parking on the corners and the rest of it. He knows like me, he's been in that line of work for a number of years and if you don't get the right response the first time, there's a second way to do it. As he said, they're in chuckles, so. That's the only motion I have, Mr. Chairman. And I want to thank the residents for coming and informing us, you know, of each side of things as well as, we appreciate your input, the fact that you were very candid. And your attorney has been very open.
Yeah, thank you, Melanie.
And bringing information to the attention, not only of the town administrator, the police chief, but the board so that, you know, we have a sense of directions you're doing there as far as training your employees and making sure they're on the right track. So, you know, I think you're in good hands with that with respect to the advice that you're getting from your counsel.
And again, the neighbors too, this is a continuous work in progress. Things aren't working in today, tomorrow, a few weeks. Try to let the owners know, if you're not getting any satisfaction, call the chief of police or you can call us. Okay, and we'll convey it to them as well. Yeah, yes, we did, yes, we did.
And to the owners as well, they're sitting here this evening saying that they're accessible. Please, if you don't, you know, so you've got three avenues to pursue if you have a concern and anybody else in the neighborhood, please don't, don't sit there and live with it. You know, we're giving everybody three options to get it under control. The owners, chief of police and the board of selectmen.
Okay.
All right.
Enough, I hope we can move forward with this.
I think we can.
Absolutely, thank you very much.
Thank you, we appreciate it, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, Jerry, thank you for your help.
Thank you, Attorney Solomon.
Happy Thanksgiving, Attorney.
Happy Thanksgiving, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you, you as well.
You as well. They're giving the numbers, they're giving, that's pretty good. Are you going to see them, Michael, they're giving the numbers over there? They're giving them. Which is, which is done, good. Motion to adjourn. Yes, motion to adjourn by Tom, second by Mike, all in favor? And I want to give everybody a happy Thanksgiving and good evening.